Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented at implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. So were there any items that council wants to pull for a separate vote? Obviously, there might be questions and stuff, but separate votes. Are there items that we, yes, Councilmember Mason?
Sorry, it's a long time to get to the raised hand. I would, I would ask that we have a separate vote on the, well, I'm not even sure if we're voting. It looks like we are based on the resolution on the short-term residential rentals. So E.
E, okay, separate vote for that on E, thank you. Is there items that we want to have feedback or questions asked of staff? Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, I'd actually, actually would like to pull item G. It's a pretty major through fare that goes through a park San Bruno on the east side that I think this information is important that that street has been in disrepair for a while. Thank you.
So do you want a separate vote or you just want to have staff report out and ask questions?
To pull, to pull the item basically to have staff, yes.
Got it.
Right hand. Different kind of question today, but that's okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay. With that, let's go to item G, and that was adopt resolution, so the one Councilmember Medina was just talking about, approving the design, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract, approving the construction contingency, appropriating $85,000 from measure A, and $100,000 from gas tax, and approving a total budget in the amount of So at this time, we're going to turn that over to Director Tan, and then council can ask questions.
So, City Clerk, if you can pull up the presentation deck, that'd be great. Thank you. You Melissa, so I do have a brief presentation on this project. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jimmy Ten, Public Works Director. Slide two, please, next. The agenda for my presentation is as follows. Just provide a brief background on the project and show some pictures of existing pavement conditions, briefly describe the bidding process and revise the results of that process, the bids, discuss the fiscal impact, provide some alternatives, and lastly, the staff's recommendations. Next, please. Cess for background, back in 2017, the city received a grant in an amount of $673,000 from the One Bay Area Grant Local Streets and Roads, otherwise known as, you know, Oback LSR. It's a federal grant that was non-competitive, and that $673,000 is the maximum amount that the city received. The initial proposed limits was along San Antonio Avenue from Santa Inez to San Felipe Avenue, and this stretch of road is considered a collector based on a state road grid map, and the grant is eligible to be used within the segment. Staff requested the firm pavement engineering to perform the pavement analysis. The firm conducted, you know, corrings and deflection tests, and the recommendation for that resulted in the removal of 13 and a half inches of pavement section and replaced with 10 and a half inch of aggregate base and three inches of hot mix asphalt with geogrid fabric to be replaced, you know, to replace between the existing subgrade and the new aggregate-based layer. Then we determined, based on the recommended improvements, staff estimated that the grant amount would be insufficient to fund the proposed limits from Santa Inez to San Felipe. Next, please. Here are just some pictures of the existing pavement taken a couple of days ago. As you can see here, the pavement is, you know, it's in deteriorating conditions. These pictures were taken looking south along San Antonio Avenue. Next, please. There's another set of pictures there. As you can see there, there's major cracks along the roadway there. Next, please. So the staff proceeded with the design of the project for the initial project limits from Santa Inez Avenue to San Felipe Avenue, and the scope of work includes to, you know, to rehab the pavement, installation of new curb ramps, since it's a requirement to provide curb ramps when streets or roads are altered during resurfacing, there would be some additional replacement of concrete sidewalk and curb and gutters work in some areas as it may be necessary to conform to new curb ramps. And there's also rerouting and replacement of storm drain facilities since storm drain limits conflict with the ramp locations, and lastly, restriping of the pavement markings. Next, please. So since staff knew about the limited grant funds, staff structured a bid to provide the maximum flexibility. The project was separated into three different bid items. One was the base bid from Santa Inez to Santa Dominga, which requires, you know, this pavement reconstruction. And the other was the bid additive number one from Santa Dominga to San Marco. And lastly, bid adder number two from San Marco to San Felipe. It's a thought was that if the base bid and the bid additive prices, you know, comes lower, we would be able to include them in overall project work. So next slide, please. So here's a figure that shows the various bid items and the limits of work, and the red line represents San Antonio Avenue. So as previously mentioned, the stretch of roadway along San Antonio is from San Felipe Avenue to Santa Inez is considered a collector, and then it's the only segment that's eligible for federal funding. The base bid from Santa Inez is from Santa Inez to Santa Dominga, which is about three blocks long, and the additive bid item number one is one block from Santa Dominga to San Marco, and additive number two is about a couple of blocks from San Marco to San Felipe. So from Santa Inez, oh, not yet, sorry, go back, please. Yes, thank you. From Santa Inez to Santa Helena along San Antonio is considered a local road and is ineligible for federal funding. So for that segment of roadway there, the city received a grant in an amount of $385,200 for bicycle and pedestrian improvements as part of the MTC TDA Article III grant, and the work consists of, you know, adding, you know, bike cheroes, fog lines, radar feedback signs, and the paving work is not part of the grant, however, it will be included as part of the design. The recommendation is to new and fill that stretch instead of the reconstruction as what's being currently done for the other locations. And the project's under design with design completion estimated by the end of this calendar year. Next slide, please. As for the bid process for the project, staff advertised the project twice, once on June 12 and the other on June 19. The city received four bids, and their bid prices are noted on the slide. Escovado grading and paving was the apparent low bidder with the amount of $640,000 for the base bid. However, the firm did not provide all the requested information required to be, you know, as part of the, you know, the complete bid package title. They specifically did not include any financial statements as required as part of the bid package. So therefore, due to the incomplete bid package, their bid was considered non-responsive. The second low bidder was Redwick Construction in an amount of $741,000 for their base bid. Based on the city's review of their bid package, it was deemed to be complete and responsive. The staff is currently recommending to award the, only the base bid for the project, which is from Santa Inez to Santa Dominga. Next, please. So as for the fiscal impact, staff is requesting additional appropriation for the project. Currently, in the fiscal year 2021, CIP budget includes a grant amount of $673,000 and a gas tax fund of $158,000, or a total of $831,000. The total estimated project cost is a little over $1 million, as noted on the slide. That includes the project management, the contract costs with Redwood Construction, a contingency of about 15%, and construction management inspection and material testing. So therefore, staff is requesting an additional appropriation of $85,000 from measure A and $100,000 from gas tax for the project. Next, please. So there are some project alternatives to consider. You know, the first is to reject all bids and rebid the project, but this may, you know, end up delaying or jeopardizing the, jeopardizing the grant deadline requirements. We can award a base bid and add, you know, select some of the bid alternatives, but it will require additional funding, or, you know, don't proceed with the project altogether and allow the grant funds to be returned, or propose, you know, using other alternative, you know, funding sources other than, you know, than gas tax and the measure As to do additional repaving work on other street segments. Next, please. So lastly, staff is recommending to, for the council to adopt the resolution to approve the design and to authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with Redwood Construction Company for the project, and also approve the contingency of $110,000 and appropriating the, the amount needed, $85,000 from measure A fund and $100,000 from gas tax for a total budget in an amount of over $1 million for this project. So this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Councilmember Medina?
Yes, and I wanted to thank staff for answering the questions that I sent last night that they got to me earlier today. Just wanted to bring some light to this street. It's in really bad shape, and there is a lot going on on the street. So from Santa Inez to the south, we currently have installed all the utilities there. Water and sewer have been installed, and we're waiting to get the design for the paving of that work. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So actually, you know, the utilities from San Marco all the way to Santa Helena has, you know, have been installed already. That's, you know, it was done as part of the Crestmore Lumina pump station project.
Great, great. So there are two segments that we're talking about. We're talking about the MTC that is south of Santa Inez that we currently are not looking at doing the final paving yet.
Not at this moment, but it will be done in the future.
Correct. Do we have a scheduled date? And I guess my overall, my overall question is to the residents that live through here, along here, that take this road, just wanted to be able to give a clearer picture of when will it all get done, right? So right now, we don't have the funding yet, and the answer to your, to the question is, for the MTC portion, when would that be designed and potentially paid?
Yeah, so as, as I mentioned during my presentation, it will be designed, estimated completion date is by the end of this calendar year, and so most likely early next year is when the paving and the, all the bicycle and pedestrian improvements will be completed.
Okay. And then we're currently, with that one figure, we're doing the base bid, which is from Santa Dominga to Santa Inez. The area between San Marco and Santa Dominga, we currently don't have enough funding to, to deal with that, and it's staff recommendation that we move forward with the base bid and not include that at this time.
Well, you know, it really depends on where the funding source is going to come from, right? And if the council decides that if you want to include that segment for one block of, you know, roadway for, you know, $353,000 at this time, staff can definitely include that as part of contract, but the council would have to decide where the funding source, you know, would be coming from. So it's, it's one of the alternatives that you can choose to do.
Right, and then the next segment from San Marco to San Felipe is not designed, and that also needs the utilities to be installed.
That's correct. The utilities for those, that those two blocks from San Marco to San Felipe, it hasn't been installed yet. So, you know, that is part of what we're calling it, the Avenue's 4-1 project, and currently, right now, the current work program for water and sewer replacement project that falls within the fiscal year 2023 to 24 for the design phase and construction in 2024 to 25. But however, you know, you know, this project could be moved up in a CIP work plan because, you know, the work for the Avenue's 1-3, which actually ends at San Felipe, will be completed by then, so there'll be connections, you know, for the water and sewer lines, you know, that can be connected to the, the future segments, you know, along, you know, from San Felipe to San Marco.
Right, and that, that's kind of what is leading to this next part of my, my comments and questions are. From the area from San Felipe all the way up to Florida, that is going to be completed, paved by next year of June, approximately.
That's correct, yes. So currently, right now, that the whole project is under construction by a range of pipelines, and so once the water and sewer mains are replaced, all of the roadways within that area will be repaved, and currently, the estimated time is around June 2021.
Great. So when we come back and look at our capital improvement program for next year would be the time that we would, that a council provided the direction to complete the Avenue's 4-1 segment. If we don't do that, we're, we're looking at a street that has potentially three blocks that, that are not done. Two for sure, one, one potentially with the bid additive number one. So I, I, I would like to remind my colleagues of, this is probably a good idea to move that up. You don't want to have construction on seven blocks and then wait two years and come back and do construction again for another two blocks. So I, I, I'm in support of this project. We, we have a lot of construction that needs to be done. This is one of our worst streets in San Bruno, and I wanted to thank you for, for taking the time to answer my questions, but I think it's important that we explain to the public how, how this construction is proceeding and how we could possibly, we will need to move things around a little bit to, to get it completed in a more expedited manner. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
There are questions on this item. Councilmember Mason?
Just, just a comment, and I think that I agree with Councilmember Medina that this is probably one of our worst streets. It would be great if at some point, not, not if you have to create it, but if it exists. I know in one of the previous discussions, we heard about the plan, and it's gonna, it was gonna be something like, something like a 10-year plan, and all the streets will get done over time, but if we could at some point see maybe what's next, so after these, this street, what's the next year, not necessarily the 10 years, but kind of what's coming up, because I think it's really exciting to start, to start seeing some of this move. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on item G? Councilmember Davis?
So was Marty's comment, so thank you for those comments, Marty. I mean, I, it's important, I think, that the public has visibility into what we're doing and what the plan is and understanding the big picture. There are many streets in San Bruno that are bad, some just as bad as that street, and it's, I can't even remember a time in my life when it was really good. The tree roots have always been a big part of that problem, so I'm happy to hear that there's progress and that there's a plan, but is there a question that you're still waiting for an answer on, Marty, in terms of your suggestion, I think, that there is sort of, the right things happen in the right order and that we give it the attention that it needs?
Councilmember?
Yeah, sure. The answer is that we would have, as a, as a council, we would have to push forward the design for that segment that's missing, that's currently scheduled to be designed in 23, 24. So, so two years from now, as we start the design, we would have to urge staff to, to move things around a little bit, and understandably, we have limited staff capability, and, and this is something that it's, it's a little awkward, in my opinion, from, from, from working here as a public works inspector, of kind of jumping around and not doing a middle part of a street. It just doesn't seem the best way of minimizing the impacts to the residents there. So if we can move some stuff around, some different projects around, I think that's, that's the, the question that I have for our colleagues and, and for everyone to understand that, that, that those neighborhoods there, they went through BART expansion, they went through Caltrans work, and it's like, it's time to like, have a break and, and to get in there and get everything done is, 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 is what I'm hoping that we'll be able to do and make that decision when it's the appropriate time, but to bring it forward now so that, as we're talking about it, that we all understand what's happening.
Thank you, because I just didn't want that point lost, and I, I
Sure.
So I, I, I don't think staff can come back to tonight, but I think it's, they're understanding that this is kind of how a number of council members probably feel. Thanks.
Great, thanks.
Same, Manager, did you have anything? City Manager, did you have anything?
He's on mute.
Yes, I did. I was talking, but no one could hear me.
That's okay. It's not, I just saw the camera zoom in, so I assumed that was my, that was the indicator.
It's like at home, sometimes I talk, but you know, no one's listening. Let's step up on the balcony for a minute. I think what we're talking about is, in particular, bid alt one, there's a reason why bid alt two is not being done, because, and that's because there needs to be some sewer and water work done in those roadways, and you don't want to pave it now, you want to do that work and then come and pave it later. But in particular is bid alternative one, which is on San Antonio from Santa Dominga to San Marco, and the cost of that is $353,000. And essentially, what I think Marty and members of council are articulating is, boy, we're doing part of the work, why can't we do this other block segment? It feels frustrating to everyone to, to do part of a street that we know is bad and leave a part that, that we all know is bad undone. And if we step up on the balcony, this is exactly the problem we have, because as a community, we don't have enough money to maintain our roads to the fashion that we need to. And if money wasn't the problem, we would absolutely do this segment. And so staff went out to bid for the money, with the money we had, and how we normally do is we do a couple bid alternatives, because if the bid's coming great or under what we're budgeting, we want to have a bid off there that we can do more work for the limited amount of money we have. And so that's exactly what was done in this case, but we have enough for the base bid, but not to do that other street segment. What I believe is being requested is to go back and say, boy, where can we find the money, or frankly, given our budgetary situations, not do another project so we can do this project, and what does that mean? And so if that's the direction from council, we can certainly do that. We will go back and look at the other road projects that are in the hopper and say, you know what, we, we need $325,000, take a look at what we have remaining in our fund balance. And I, I know council knows that we frankly scraped them as bare as we could, trying to resolve our $8.2 million budget deficit this year, and we delayed a number of capital improvement projects and even used $2 million of measure G to cover a portion of our operating hole. And so let's, let's, as we talk about this one project and our frustrations that we don't have enough money to do everything we want to do, sort of step up on the balcony and realize that our greater, our greater challenge is that we need roughly $8 million a year, need to be spending roughly $8 million a year to get our roads to where they are, and at last, we were spending about $2 million, and Jimmy, correct me if I'm wrong on that $2 million, but I know it was nowhere close to eight. And so we have to make these, what feels like terrible decisions, because we don't have the financial resources, and COVID punched us all in the gut and further, and took more away. And so I think part of the, my response is we can, if council would like, we can delay the action on this and come back and try and find, and give you a proposal to pull from X to pull from Y. What I'll tell you is that we thought of that, and we weren't recommending that, we were recommending going with the base bid, because that's what we have the money for, but if so directed, we will go back and reassess and, and give you a list of trade-offs. And what I, what I believe is not possible, and I'm going to ask staff or the city attorney to, to opine, is for us to take an action tonight to approve the base bid, and then at a later date, come back and say we would like to do the bid alternative. I don't know, I don't, I actually don't know if technically if that's possible, and so, because that would be another way to move forward with what we know we have money for, and then if we can find money, another $325,000 to do another road segment, that would be nice, but can we make that decision with the bid we had before us today at a later date? So Jimmy or Mark, if you can opine on that, I guess I'm tossing that out.
City Attorney or Director? Is anybody able to answer that?
So we're, we're thinking.
Okay. While you're thinking too, I just want to also, to, to put into that, obviously, we don't want to lose an opportunity for a grant, so I just want to keep that in mind too, so if there's any concern on that.
That's correct. So I think one thing that we received from Caltrans as regards to what is called the East 76, that was back in March, so six months after that is when we're supposed to start, you know, sending invoices to Caltrans, and so with that, you know, we may be able to delay one council meeting, but not multiple council meetings, you know, for this work. The other thing is, you know, there's a very limited amount of funds, a balance left over from measure A and gas tax. You know, just, there, there was an available balance of $299,000 in measure A and, and $420 in gas tax, so there's really not much remaining in our, those two funds to be able to supplement any additional costs for bid additive number one. Some of the other paving projects are already starting already, that we're, we're planning to proceed with, and that is going to utilize some of these gas tax and, and measure A funds, so, you know, I just don't know which other projects will be, be able to defer and to try to get this one block of street in here for this.
Anything to add, City Attorney?
So I just want to make sure I understand what the alternative is that the city manager is proposing, could you?
So award the, award the base bid, but go to the contractor in two to three weeks from now, or a few meetings afterwards, if we can find the $320, $353,000 after we already have council action to on their bid? My guess is no.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, that's my guess, but. So what we're essentially, what you're essentially hearing is time is of the essence, because we want to take advantage of the grant. When we adopted our budget, we had extremely limited funds for road maintenance, and we cut that back. And we, this is one of the projects that was a funded project, we went out to bid with the money we had and had a bid all, and we can do the base amount, but cannot do the additional bid alternative one or the bid alternative two. And so, you know, unfortunately, this is one of the challenges when the need outstrips the resources.
Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, like I, I think I tried to say earlier that I, I'm, I understand, and going forward with the base bid, I'm, I'm in support of that, clearly, that we don't want to risk any chance of losing any grant money. And it's, it's, I think it's beneficial to have this discussion to really see how tight it is, you know, we, we can't do a block of street because we don't have the money. And, and we'll get through this, you know, with, with COVID, that's why we were pushing for measure G so hard, you know, trying to get that $4 million a year, so that we would be able to do extra stuff, and, and it makes more sense. So I, I will support this base bid, and I can live with that, that, I think it's a good discussion to have, you know, this is reality, so I'm, I'm done.
Okay. So with that, then we have, under consent, we have items A through H, but pulling E for a separate discussion and vote. Is there any action from council?
Motion to approve the, all items except E.
Second.
Motion made by Salazar, seconded by Medina. Motion made by Salazar, seconded by Medina, to approve all but E under consent. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry, thank you. Now we'll move to item E, waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance to amend the San Bruno Municipal Code Title twelve, land use, Article three zoning, Chapter twelve point eight oh definitions, and Chapter twelve point two seven oh, short-term residential rentals. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, so first of all, I'm really excited that this is before us tonight. I, I had some kind of lot, maybe final questions before we move forward with a vote and the next step. But can, can someone explain a little bit more about C, for-profit commercial uses? This is twelve point two seven oh, point two oh. I just, I feel like I'm imagining these big parties happening next door to somebody's house every day, you know, in San Bruno. And I'm starting to wonder if we need a C, but where, where, where would this happen? And for whoever's going to answer it, it's the for-profit commercial uses section?
Council? Councilmember, can you give that code reference again?
Yeah, it's twelve point two seven oh, point two zero. It's under definitions. And it's, it's a definition of for-profit commercial uses.
If I may, through the mayor?
Yes, please.
So the city manager and the community and economic development director may have something to add. But we did spend some time looking at this, and the idea was that these are essentially uses of the property for hire. And that's, that's the distinction between this and some of the other sort of personal uses. So if you have a party at your, at your Airbnb, that's not covered under C. But if, you know, your people are paying to come to your party that you're doing for somebody else, then that is covered under C.
Okay, so it says, but not limited to corporate events. So somebody could essentially rent your home out for, for a corporate party?
Right, it's doing it for hire as opposed to for, for personal reasons. And that's, that's why we, we made that, that's why that word is, is in there for hire, to distinguish it from a personal use of the property in which the people who are hosting aren't receiving compensation.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, that, that helps. And then my other question was, it's actually more general, and I don't, I don't believe that this has been done. And so sorry to open it, open this conversation up now, but it's something that I've been, that I, I just kind of put two and two together and feel like it could be, be an issue. Maybe it's already an issue, I don't know. But could we put a requirement on all of these to, for no more than, you know, two cars? Is that something that would be within our jurisdiction? Because the other issue I can imagine is people, when you look at a hundred and twenty days, you start renting your house out. You're not here. You leave your cars here, and now you've got, you know, two, three, however many people meeting up, you know, here to rent an Airbnb. And now you've got an additional two or three cars on the streets. And so I'm just wondering if that would be within this particular short-term rental ordinance? And could that be part of the registration with the city is to say, you know, we've informed whoever's renting this particular unit or house that they can't have more than one or two vehicles?
Sure. Why don't I bring the community and economic development director on? But it is possible to add that in. The biggest challenge is enforcement of it. But Darcy, who worked very hard on this, why don't you take that?
Aye, yeah. And just to clarify on that last item for the group, oh, this is Darcy Smith, Community and Economic Development Director, for those of you who are listening on the telephone. I did that recently. I realized that's why I wanted to. Those commercial events are prohibited, and I want to summarize just anecdotally, in San Bruno, we have not reportedly had any issues, according to the police chief, related to this, but it certainly has been an issue in other jurisdictions. And I think when we looked at our ordinance, which I really wanted to be state-of-the-art, we wanted to prohibit those for-profit commercial uses, because they were popping up in some of the areas and causing some problems. And in fact, they still, they still are, if you, if you read the news recently. And in some cases, the hosts have stepped in and have prohibited those types of commercial operations. But in addition to what the host rules are, we wanted local rules in place. So related to parking, what the, what the proposed ordinance states is that any existing onsite parking spaces shall be made available for the short-term rental occupants. And so what we aspire to accomplish with that is to ensure that if there was a renter, that they, that the onsite spaces were available. Because there, there have been just listings that I've perused, which have said that they won't make those spaces available, and they'll force people to park on the street, which just didn't really seem fair if you're, if you're paying to stay there and the parking is available. But as the city manager stated, we could include a requirement, I, that there be a cap on the number of vehicles. I think the challenge is just around enforceability, because frankly, by the time we get a complaint through our police department, the vehicles may be gone, or it may just be difficult to cite that guest.
If, if, that, it's very helpful. If, if enforceability, could it, could that go through the revocation process too, though? So if you continue to have people that are renting your house, causing parking issues, then you revoke, you can revoke the permit, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there are strict revocation requirements that would be in place. And I think if we had any violation of the C's municipal code, we have grounds to revoke it. And we would just need to drill down to kind of what those violations are. Are they vehicles being parked on the street over seventy-two hours? What kind of violations are they? And can we directly tie them to a guest of the unit? Sometimes these are, again, like transient guests, so they might be here and then leave, and it's harder to tie them, their car registration to a local residence in our city. So it might get some investigation, but, or might require some investigation. But, you know, we have a, a system through the police department to track complaints related to parking violations on our city streets. And if we could directly correlate that with a specific short-term residential rental, I think we would take any action that we can take related to permits. But sometimes it's, it's transient in nature, which inherently then makes our job around enforcement of the code or revocation of permits a little bit challenging.
Okay, those were my, my two questions, I think. I'd be curious to hear if any of the council members have any thoughts on the parking issue, because I can definitely see that becoming an issue in some parts of San Bruno. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments in regards to item E under consent? Councilmember Medina?
Right, so, so we, we currently don't have enough teeth in this to be able to take action. Or, I'm sorry, would anything need to be changed in, in the current ordinance?
So, councilmember Medina, through the mayor, why don't I take that? Because I think it's important to sort of parse the issue that, that we're talking about. The issue that councilwoman brought up is can we add into these short-term rental regulations a requirement that short-term rental guests can only have X number of cars? Right? A couple pieces of that. We started talking about enforceability of that, which is challenging, because you would need to have the report document that that car or, or cars were tied to the short-term rental. And it would have to be something that would stand up to due process. We couldn't, even if we had that regulation on the books, just simply do a revocation or take action simply based on complaints. And the transitory nature of that would just make that the level of enforcement complicated. So let's pause that. The other thing that Director Smith talked about is within the ordinance right now, as written, if there are any violations of our municipal code, parking or otherwise, that are documented and tied back, let's say if cars were parked for over seventy-two hours or an excessive amount of parking tickets. That documented evidence tied to people that were short-term rental guests. Again, it would be in a, it would be a process to document that. But if we had those and a, a short terminal property was causing documented problems or racking up violations, we could take action and revoke. And no changes are needed to what's proposed before you. I think point two. Point three, I want to also say that if we do add anything to the short-term rental regulations about parking, we very well may have to stratify that between someone that is renting a portion of a residence, between someone that is renting a whole residence. Because if you're renting a whole residence as a short-term rental, our ability to say you can only have X number of cars is likely limited, because if you're a regular rental, we can't say you can have X number of cars. So it would likely only be for a short-term rental where you are, where the unit is occupied and you're just renting a, a portion of, 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 of the unit that is a, a legal portion eligible for short-term rental. Point three. I think point four that I want to make about this conversation is that we are on the second reading of the short-term rental ordinance. And so any changes at this point would need to come back to the city council for a first reading. We would need to, if council did want to take action tonight on the second reading, we would have to take the direction, go back, do the work, add it in, then have a first reading and then have another second reading. And so the regulations would be delayed. It is possible also, I guess, point five, to adopt the short-term rental regulations in the second reading, and then the council can make modifications at a later date, subject to whatever direction is provided.
Thank you for that. Think I'm a little bit, I think I got it. Mr. Mayor, I, I, I think the, the better solution probably is for, if you live on a street that has a bunch of Airbnbs, you should really try to get a parking permit program. And so therefore, those guests do not get a parking space at all. It goes to the registered owner of the, of the unit. So I don't know, the city attorney's here too. So that's what I would do. I, I, I coincidentally got, had a complaint today of, of, hey, there's a house on this street, and they're having a bunch of parties every weekend, and they take up all the parking. And it's one night, right? Ten cars show up for a party. Well, if they're, if they're making a bunch of noise, then you call the police. The police is going to enforce the, making noise at night. But it's impossible to get, if you have, if you're having a party, and they're all bringing their cars in, and they're there for one night or six hours, they're allowed to be there. So it's, it's kind of, it's, it's impossible to enforce that. So anyhow, yeah, this is a little complicated, but I see the, the problems with trying to change things at this time.
Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure that, I'm, I'm hoping I understood this right. Director Smith, I'm just going to give you an example of something I experienced, and then if we can maybe work our way backwards to make sure that we, it can't hap, it cannot happen here. I went to pick somebody up that was visiting and was staying in an Airbnb. And when I got to the location, I won't say what city it was in, it was not San Bruno. There was literally a parallel parked row of cars that were already there. Then a row of cars that were double parked, that appeared to all be dropping people off, because when I turned around, it looked like the entire block was rentals, short-term rentals. And the person I was picking up told me they were renting one room, and the owner had turned the home, a five-bedroom home, into individual rentals. So every room in the house was a rental, and so were the other houses on that block. And so based on my read, that would not be possible. And I just want to confirm that for anybody who may have those concerns that, that is watching this today.
Sure, so I'll answer that question, Darcy Smith, Community and Economic Development Director. So first of all, our local ordinance does set a limit on the number of individual bedrooms or sleeping rooms that could be rented within a house, assuming that the owner is present, so it would be a hosted situation. And that would be up to three bedrooms. So that doesn't set an occupancy maximum, but a bedroom maximum. And then, like I said, we've required that any parking spaces on the property be made available to the guests. So if there was a garage stall or driveway stall, that would be available to those guests. For street parking, that's, as you know, a little bit tougher for the city to regulate, because it's public parking. People can park there. There's different regulations of the vehicle code that govern that. And as Councilmember Medina stated, we also have other tools in our toolkit to regulate that impact on a neighborhood, such as a residential parking program that may be more effective. For example, than putting something in this ordinance, which is a stated easier, just might be tougher to enforce, just because of the transient nature of, of it. And, and our potential inability to link those cars with the short-term residential rental. Not everyone registers their vehicle, gives their license plate. But in the situation you described, it just sounded like perhaps that city is allowing an entire house with five bedrooms to be rented out. And it doesn't appear that then they're requiring the host to make any off-street parking, so get the garage, a carport, a driveway, available to the guests. And our ordinance requires that. And so we, if, if this were to occur, and we got a lot of complaints, and we sent code enforcement officers, and they observed, maybe anecdotally, or had more evidence, that, that, that in fact, the guests were not, that the parking was not made available. Sometimes in the listings, it will actually clearly state like, no parking made available. So then if we go out and there's a garage and a long driveway, we could again, have documentation that would then allow us to either not issue the permit or, or rescind the permit. That makes sense.
It does make sense. I just wanted to ask for people who are watching. I know that there are concerns around short-term rentals, and I am prepared to vote yes on this. But I think it's important people understand and be hopefully put at ease a little bit, that this is not, this is going to be more restrictive.
Well, I would also, just in, in closing, emphasize, this is the first, this is the first time San Bruno has adopted these regulations. So as I mentioned in my previous presentation, we went out, we surveyed all the cities. We, we didn't just copy it from somewhere else, because frankly, the city attorney and the city manager and I looked at them and thought, none of these are really what's the right fit for San Bruno. But we made our best professional recommendation. And I guess I'll, I'll just assure you that, that if we do see an area for improvement, to bring that forward at the right time as an amendment. If we see, you know, some area that, that's causing a lot of complaints from the residents to the police department, certainly there would be the room to come back for an amendment if it's needed. This is a local code. You can change it at any point in the future if it's needed.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the discussion. So on item E, we're going to need to take it in separate parts. We need to waive the second reading. So do we have a motion and a second to waive the second reading?
I'll, I'll motion to waive the second reading.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
I'll second. I'm sorry, Mark, okay. Mr. Medina will second. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. And then finally, we're going to ask for a motion, a second, to introduce and adopt the ordinance, please.
All motion to adopt the ordinance?
Yes.
Think we need a second?
Yes, so a motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Mr. Medina.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you to staff, because it is good to have that on the books. Now we're going to, yes, Councilmember Davis.
Just curious, is it the person who pulls it, the one that really should make the motions, or how does that work? Or here's another question. If we have questions on the item, can we just?
the item, can we discuss it and determine if we need to pull it separately? Or can we just discuss it and then determine? You know what I mean? Like, we're at eight, we're at nine o'clock at night, and I feel bad for anybody, especially staff, that's already put a full day in, and we haven't even gotten to our, really, the bulk of our agenda items. So I just want to figure out a way that we can sort of get the information out and get through the process without really taking a long time. So thank you.